So the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the last meeting. Took place on the twentieth of October. They've been on the table for the last half hour. Are you content that I sign these as a true record of the meeting? Thank you. Apologies for absence, Mr Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have received apologies from councillors Brian Adams, Paddy Blagdon, Carol Coburn, Brian Ellis, Patricia Ellis, John Fraser, Pat Frost, Jed Hall, Jill Hargreaves, Stephen Hill, Simon Inchbold, Martin Lear, Denise Legale, Stephen Mulliner, David Munro, Libby Piper, Ross Welland and Nick Williams.
Thank you. Declarations of interest. Have we received any?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On item eight, executive minutes, minute one oh nine, councillor Edwards has declared an interest as vice chairman of the Hazelmead Board on Athletics Club.
Are there any other declarations of interest? No? Move on to mayor's announcements. First thing I'd like to do is to thank all of you who came and supported my Christmas fair a week ago, last Thursday. There were lots of cakes and donations and it was a very successful event. Thank you for all your support and we raised up just over six hundred pounds as a result of that fair, so congratulations and thank you for all you did supporting that particular affair. Needless to say, the mayor and the mayors have been busy with carol concerts, nativity plays, visiting care homes and we've covered somewhat over three thousand miles since we took over in May this year. So, as you can imagine, starting today in Ewhurst and then moving on to Farnham and probably back to Godleming or Cranley afterwards, you certainly tot up the miles, but very enjoy what it is too. I will just remind you that the Waverley Carol Concert is here in the council chamber on Friday at eleven thirty and you would all be extremely welcome to come, so if you're free then, we look forward to seeing you. And I hear a suggestion that they're probably mince pies in the mayor's parlour for half an hour beforehand if there's any incentive needed. A date for your diary. The Danesfield Concert I mentioned last time is confirmed as being on the nineteenth of March at St Catherine's School in their new auditorium. It's going to be light popular operatic music and so if you are interested, I'm sure tickets will go quickly, but if you are interested, please do let Alison know as soon as possible and she makes you get on to the priority list for those tickets. So I don't think it's going to be, something not to be missed, I think. That's really all I want to say at this stage, so we move on to questions from the public and the first question is from Mrs Saunders.
As you'll have seen from your agendas, this is very short and to the point, I hope. Please, would either the leader of the council or the appropriate portfolio holder tell me how much Waverley council has spent in total on the East Street Brightwell scheme to date and in broad terms, for what purposes or actions this spending has been applied? Thank you.
Councillor Potts.
Mr Mayor, thank you and Mrs Saunders, good evening and thank you very much for your question. I'm happy to share these figures with you and they've all, of course, been included in Waverley's published accounts, but I've had them pulled together and I'll just run through them now for you so that you have the total sums that you've requested. In total, Waverley has spent five point three million pounds on the Brightwell scheme to date. This figure breaks down as follows. The Riverside Tennis Club and new car park, one point nine million. The land acquisitions, two point five million pounds. Demolition and other site works, point four million pounds. Legal and consultancy costs, point five million pounds. In addition, the council, for a number of years, chose to capitalise the salaries of project staff totaling point five million pounds. I hope that suffices. Thank you.
Mr Edge.
Good evening. At its meeting on the December first, the executive agreed a report on the spatial strategy for the future Waverley local plan. They said that it was not necessary for this to come to full council because it was only a direction of travel. However, taking together the contents of the report, which identifies that at least two thousand nine hundred homes will be in greenfield locations across the borough, and the answer to my question to the executive meeting, the portfolio holder for planning said that there is no intention to assess whether Dunstfold Aerodrome could take four thousand eight hundred homes to accommodate the additional fourteen hundred identified as needed since the consultation. The minimum number of homes on greenfield houses is now clearly planned to be greater than sixteen fifty, the number specified on option four of the consultation, which was supported by eighty per cent of respondees. This increase of one thousand two hundred and fifty houses on greenfield sites in Waverley seems to have been agreed as the basis for the new spatial strategy without any reference to full council. Could the leader of the council agree that the portfolio holder for planning is wrong to rule out any assessment of the capacity of Dunstfold Aerodrome to take four thousand eight hundred houses?
Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Edge. I can confirm that I agree with the position stated by councillor Brian Adams that four thousand eight hundred dwellings at Dunstfold Aerodrome was not considered as an option in the consultation in two thousand and fourteen on the local plan and that there is no reason to consider that as an option now.
Mr Hyman.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. I note that the council papers say that we cannot possibly afford to spend another forty thousand pounds to reduce our car parking charging time to six o'clock in the evening, so for the sake of perspective, my question tonight refers to the July council meeting's decision to gift Crest and Sainsbury's a two million pound public subsidy. We would assume that if Waverley gifts Crest Nicholson Sainsbury's enough of our money, then their funding and minimum land value challenges can be overcome, so my question is a request that the portfolio holder provides a Christmas status report and update on the East Street and Memorial Hall redevelopment. As it's quite a wide subject, I'm specifically asking for timescales and a progress update in view of procedures that are necessary prior to the bravery walk and bypass tree felling, construction access and main scheme commenced. We've heard nothing for a long time and your status report is eagerly awaited, so if you would provide some detail of what we can expect to happen and when, that would be much appreciated. Thank you and merry Christmas.
Councillor Potts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor and thank you, good evening, Mr Hyman. In answer to your question, the Memorial Hall refurbishment continues to programme with the expectation that the works will be tendered in the new year, early part of spring of twenty sixteen. The first phase of development for the Memorial Hall involves moving Farnham Town's football club changing rooms and that's expected to start in the new year. With regard to Brightwell's, I can report that Crest Nicholson are currently working on the funding agreement and a report to council is expected in early twenty sixteen. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. And that concludes questions from the public. Question times, Taylor, have any questions been received from members?
None received, Mr Mayor.
Motions?
None received.
Right, we move on then to the minutes of the executive held on the first of December. Leader, would you kindly present?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I present the minutes of the executive of the first of December twenty fifteen and I have a second.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, please to second.
Yeah.
Mr Mayor, the first item is minute eighty seven. This is a budget management report and in-year budget review. There are six recommendations set out on pages thirteen and fourteen of the agenda.
Any speakers? Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report contains a fair amount of detail. I think it's sufficient for me to say that our financial position remains sound and you will see that the most significant of the recommendations concern the carry forward of capital spend, particularly from the housing revenue account capital through to next year. I believe this reflects some over enthusiasm when the projects, when the projects could be done at the time the budgets were set and I'd just like to update everybody that during the year, we've improved the reporting and monitoring of capital spend. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Anybody else? If not, we move to the recommendations on page thirteen and fourteen. There are six recommendations. Are they agreed? Leader.
Thank you. Minute eighty eight is a review of the discretionary rate relief policy. There are five recommendations on page sixteen.
Any speakers? Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just briefly to say that this item concerns our ability to grant discretionary discounts of rates in addition to the mandatory discounts. The recommendation is simply that we continue to do as we have done over recent years. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Anybody else? In that case, we go to the recommendations at the bottom of page sixteen. There are five recommendations. Are they agreed? Leader.
Thank you. Minute eighty nine, the car parking review and the response to consultation and review of tariff structures. Two recommendations on page nineteen.
Are there any speakers? Councillor Dinas.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Members will recall that the report of the two thousand and fifteen car park review considered on the fifth of October, we were asked to do a formal consultation on proposed reduction in charging hours and this will provide an additional thirty minutes. Public consultation has been completed and there were three responses, which are attached. They were supportive but two would have preferred a greater reduction, given an additional sixty minutes. I also emphasised the properly considered management and charging arrangements were essential to manage our car parks and to be able to reinvest in our car parks to maintain and improve the environment for everybody. A further thirty minutes would have cost another forty thousand pounds per annum, which I don't think is affordable, so I'd recommend the council proceeds with the order to reduce the charging period by thirty minutes. The executive also asked for a report on progress and other recommendations of the review and the tariff structures have been reviewed as requested to reflect inflation since the last increases in two thousand and twelve, although some car parks were only reviewed in two thousand and eight. To reflect this, the prices are rounded up to the nearest ten pence and there are comparisons with other local authorities which are set out in annex one. And this demonstrates that our charges are very comparative to those in neighbouring areas. I'd like to just quickly mention the withdrawal of the telephone payment facility. The council fully appreciates the inconvenience that the decision may have caused to residents, but as a responsible borrower, we took prompt action. And as they were involving contractual issues we were unable to resolve quickly, it was with reluctance and regret that the council felt it was alternative but to stop the service immediately. Three other Surrey local authorities have also terminated the service for the same reason. We have already begun the tendering process for the new contract to commence at the end of the current contract and we are therefore looking at the new arrangements being in place from the first of February two thousand and sixteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. May I congratulate the officers for producing a very readable report? I also had a couple of meetings with them which were very informative and I understand some of the terrible restrictions under which they operate, namely money. There's much to welcome in this. I welcome the reduction by half an hour of the parking times in the evening and also particularly the experiment, which I understand is being carried out in Cranley to look into pay-on exit and using credit cards which would particularly increase the attraction of using the car park or rather lessen the inconvenience. We know that in common with other councils, we are obliged to raise revenue from car parks, partly because or maybe mainly because central government caps our ability to raise income. And I would just like to say, though, I'd hope in the future, when such restrictions may possibly, if ever, be relieved, that we could have perhaps a more enlightened policy to either reduce charges, particularly in light of competing towns over the border, some which aren't mentioned here, which are very cheap to park in, for the benefit of our retail areas and perhaps also, and thinking out of the box, to have some more interesting schemes whereby, for example, you could have an hour or two free and then you pay. I would stress that this has nothing to do with commuters, they're easily identifiable as, of course, they're very valuable to us and necessary part of our, useful part of our community, they need to park for hours on end and the charging structures can accommodate that. I just wanted to put down a marker for in the future, when conditions permit, we could perhaps change the direction of travel in our parking policy. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It was very interesting to read the Godleming edition of the Surrey advertiser last week, which had a large banner headline proclaiming that there was to be, was it a seven and a half or eight and a half per cent hike in the Waverley Borough car parking charges? It was very interesting to read that in juxtaposition with the previous week's Surrey advertiser, which justified a five p increase in its own cover price from ninety five p to a pound. This was in very small, a very small section on the front page. It was fully justified because it was such good value for money that it was still only a pound to buy the Surrey advertiser and, would you believe, in the following, namely last week's Surrey advertiser edition, there was a lovely letter of the week from a resident saying, "I think the Surrey advertiser is fantastic even at a higher price." So I do look forward to the Surrey advertiser carrying a similar article, you know, about our parking charges here, which are very much in line with inflation. I think a very good job has been done and I would congratulate officers on a job well done and nobody lacks to pay more for anything, I understand that, but I think this is a perfectly reasonable thing, but it would be nice to see an interesting coverage about it from the Surrey advertiser, wouldn't it, Mr Mayor? Thank you.
You make an interesting point and I think from what I recall, it wasn't the only five p increase in the last twelve months either. Anyway, leader, do you want to comment further before we go to the recommendations?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I think much has been said by the portfolio holder and councillor Martin and indeed some of the increases. I have a list of when the last increases, I've got one here in Farnham that was last increased in December two thousand and three and quite a long list from two thousand and eight, so the RPI increases on them, where they've only gone up ten pence, they're way behind, so I think, you know, the Surrey advertiser certainly needs to look at its charging price. I know it's poor but even people, less people will read it, I assume.
Right, we go straight to the recommendations then. The two recommendations on page nineteen, are they agreed? Leader.
Thank you very much. Item number ninety is the review of polling stations. Members, this has been undertaken to try and remove polling stations from schools, although there is a statutory requirement in law for a school to give a polling station on the day of an election. We do try to avoid that and you will see from the report that in Hazelmead East and Grayswood and in Hampstead, that has been possible. Unfortunately, it's gone the other way at Farnham, but the report sets out the reasons for all of this and there are three recommendations, forty six, forty seven and forty eight on page twenty two, and I commend those to council.
Are there any speakers? If not, we go straight to the recommendations as the leader says on bottom page twenty two. Are they agreed? Thank you. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Minute ninety one is the Gambling Act two thousand and five, a public consultation on review of the council statement of gambling policy. This item proposes the deletion, oh sorry, this item is a three-year review that is required by the law and it has been through the Licensing and Regulatory Committee, which support the document, and it is now commended by the executive to council. One recommendation, forty nine on page twenty four.
Thank you, leader. Are there any speakers? If not, then we go straight to the recommendation on page twenty four. Is that agreed? Leader.
Minute ninety two is regarding the building control establishment and this item proposes the deletion of two part-time vacant administrator posts within the building control team to create a new post of a business support officer, which is more appropriate to the needs of the team going forward. I commend the recommendation fifty on page twenty five to council.
Thank you, leader. Are there any speakers? Again, if not, we go straight to recommendation fifty on page twenty five. Is that agreed? Leader.
Minute ninety three is the accountancy services establishment. This is to review staffing arrangements of the accountancy team going forward. One recommendation on page twenty five.
Again, are there any speakers? Again, if no speakers, then we go to that recommendation. Is that agreed? Leader.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Item ninety four, members, is the appointment of an independent person or persons, as is required under the Localism Act two thousand and eleven. We are required to appoint at least one independent person to the standards committee and you will see that two people, it is proposed, are renewed and an additional one appointed. We have more than the one so that at least somebody will be available. So the review has taken place. The recommendations are set out in recommendation fifty two and fifty three on page twenty six.
Thank you, leader. Are there any speakers? If not, then that, is that recommendation, those recommendations agreed? Leader.
Minute ninety six, Mr Mayor, is a staffing report. This is set out in the exempt annex seven. Members will see the reasons for this, which are set out with regard to these matters. There are five recommendations, fifty four point one to fifty four point five, in the exempt papers on page sixty eight. I commend them to council.
Thank you, leader. I should just warn members, if you wish to speak, if we can keep this discussion in open, I would be grateful. If you do wish to go into exempt, we would need to do that and clear the gallery. So, do anybody wish to speak on this item? Councillor Ramsdale.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could I just add that the overall impact of these proposed changes is cost neutral?
Any other speakers? If not, then we'll go to the recommendations in exempt on page sixty eight, the five recommendations. Are they agreed?
Mr Mayor, that concludes part one of the minutes. I think you have a couple of speakers in part two.
On item, agenda item one hundred and one, councillor Potts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The emerging spatial strategy, I just wanted to say a few words on this report and this document that's before members tonight. Whilst I understand that this report is necessary, it's a key part of the testing process for the local plan, I think we need to be very clear here on a number of areas that are mentioned within it. I do feel that we should do all we can, given the many uncertainties that we currently have, namely Dunstfold Park, the borough-wide highways infrastructure issues and serious air pollution around Farnham, to ensure that we submit a robust, evidence-based local plan. Given the seemingly ever-changing goalposts from central government, we really do need to submit our plan within the current proposed timescales and I know that the portfolio holder and officers are working very hard to achieve that, but I do feel with the many unknowns, and again, mainly in terms of highways, including the current indicator from Highways England of plans that appear to be for limited improvements to the A3, that we should explore the possibility of submitting a shorter term plan and then reassess our longer term housing number once more of these crucial unknowns have been resolved. I think we also need to be clear that the current emerging evidence in relation to Dunstfold Park indicates eighteen hundred homes at Dunstfold as currently being sustainable, but I would stress the phrase "current" evidence because until we have the full transport assessment from the Waverley Borough Council engaged consultants, Mark McDonald, which I understand from officers, they are now working hard to analyse, we cannot comment and we cannot rule out, we cannot rule anything in and we cannot rule anything out in terms of looking longer term at a sustainable mixed housing and business site at Dunstfold. We really do need a sound local plan and we will need to evidence very carefully all aspects and considerations in terms of Dunstfold Park and the many other sites within the borough. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Forosevsky.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was actually wondering whether to come here tonight, I'm glad I did now because there's so few of us but, and the shops are quiet, but sorry, I'm being facetious. Do you know, I really don't know where to start with this, I'm not going to be as articulate as councillor Potts there because I feel very raw and emotional about this subject and I think it deserves because it is so very, very important. I feel as if I'm banging my head on a brick wall with this one, you know, and for years it's the same argument, it's a different day, it's just getting so frustrating. One of the reasons I did want to be here tonight and I feel I have to be here tonight is it's my duty to be here tonight to all those people and all those hardworking people in Cranley who elected me to help them protect and save their environment. At our last parish council, at our last meeting of the full council, I was pleased to see the local plan and the emerging spatial strategy, but I was very, very disappointed and I'm more disappointed that this evening, we are looking at this item under part two. If you're going to have an item this important, you need to examine every single aspect to make sure it's right, evidence-based and sound. If this is what's emerged, if this is what's emerging from the emerging local plan, then not much is emerging sadly. We've got to get real, we've got to get a grip, we've got to move on with this. What's worrying for me is that are we really saying that we are waiting and hoping for the inspector's decision on the outstanding appeals? If allowed, will ensure that we get our five-year supply? Are we not capable of doing that ourselves? Are we really expecting an independent inspector to do that for us? What are we doing in between? Have we thought about what would happen if an inspector dismisses one or all of the appeals? What's our backup plan? Do we have one? And what are we going to do till then? If we are now reliant on the inspector to make our decisions, what's the point of us being here? What's the point of the joint JCPs? Waverley should take the lead, members of full council should make decisions. It seems we've lost our passion and our drive and we're happy just to plod along. I'm not happy to plod along, I haven't plodded along for years and I'm not going to stop now. I'm not going to hang on and do nothing, it's not an option, it's too risky going forward. So I'll ask again and I do this with great respect and this time, please, can I have an answer? Can we have a local plan in SIG? Can we be involved? And whilst we were waiting for appeals decisions, can we be proactive, creative, come up with a policy or policy that protects us from this out-of-control abuse of the planning system? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor MacLeod.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for your nice Christmas card. Much appreciated. I put my name down to speak on this item this evening because I've got a number of real concerns about this draft emerging spatial strategy. If I can quote from the preamble, it says that the council can't completely discount the need for a further the need for a further public consultation if, for example, the final spatial strategy is significantly different from any of the scenarios consulted on last year. Now, I think if we compare what happened last year with what's happening at the moment, we'll see that it is in fact very, very different. Last year, we consulted on a housing requirement of four seventy houses a year, that's now gone up to five hundred and nineteen houses a year, an over ten percent increase. The consultation was on a total of eight thousand four hundred and fifty houses over the full planning period, that's now gone up to nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-one, a seventeen percent increase. The planning period has actually changed, it was previous an eighteen-year period from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and thirty-one. A, a year has been added and it now goes out to two thousand and thirty-two. I don't quite know why, but that isn't referred to or explained in, in the document itself. Another very significant change is that in our previous consultation, we put forward four methods of delivering eight thousand four hundred and fifty houses. This time we're saying that we can only supply six thousand eight hundred houses and there are shortfall there for three thousand six hundred, three thousand and sixty-one, which can be addressed by, can be reduced to twelve hundred and sixty-one if we, if we deliver eighteen hundred at Dunsfold, or possibly eliminated if we deliver more at Dunsfold. The other thing to say is that, where, where are we on, on delivering this thing? What, what we're actually saying is because we have this shortfall, as councillor Potts referred to, we may go back to a shorter plan. It would actually be a fourteen-year plan because we're talking about delivering ten from ten years from the time when the plan is, is adopted. And that would be a fourteen-year plan. And I, I won't bother, I won't trouble with the calculations at the moment, but I will, I will actually circulate them later. It's very easy to work out arithmetically that this would mean delivering something like seven hundred houses a year over that ten-year period. And if we consider that at the moment, the average number of houses delivered in Waverley is two hundred and twenty-six a year, that is enormous change and enormous, enormous difference from what happens now and from what is practically possible. So I think I have to say that I, I can see no way in which the council can avoid a further public consultation. And I think I can confidently predict if we attempted to do that, the inspector would actually throw out this, this local plan on day one, as he did last time. The other thing I want to cover briefly because I've very little time left, is that I've a lot of concerns about what we can actually deliver. It's all very well to say the requirement is five hundred and nineteen, but can we actually deliver five hundred and nineteen? There's a great many constraints in this. There's the SPAS constraints of the Thames Basin Hastings, the Weldon Hastings SPAS, there's the constraints of what's happening near to, to Waverley and Farnham in particular. We actually are joined four other borough councils and these four other borough councils between them are going to be building something like twenty thousand houses within five or ten miles of Farnham. And I'm sure there's similar problems elsewhere in the borough. I think I'm running out of time though, Mr Mayor, and I usually stress too much, so thank you, I have to conclude there.
Thank you, councillor. Leader, do you wish to comment?
Thank you very much. If I could just, I'll deal with some of the points of councillor MacLeod first and the five nineteen and can we deliver, which was your last point, I think, even if we said we'd have that, it's up to the developers whether we deliver or not, but prior to that, we have to test. As councillor Potts said earlier, we need evidence and we need to test. And that's why we are pulling all the evidence together to test to see whether it's five nineteen. It might be a much lower figure that this borough is able to deal with because of constraints in highways and other matters. And should we need to consult again, we shall take council's advice on whether that is the right course of action or whether we don't need to do that, we won't be making up our mind ourselves. Some of these changes, of course, we're responding to government and officers will be meeting the CLG in January to discuss the length of the, of the plan and because others have certainly shortened the period because of constraints put on, for instance, in Chichester by the A twenty-seven, and we have similar problems here with the A three. Going to councillor Forozewski and, and the comments made there, of course, there were the member briefing all-day meeting in, in July, we had the community ONS for all members in November. And yes, you say that the inspector will make the decisions, well, for instance, if we take Noel Lane Cranly, four hundred and twenty-five, was put to the, a committee with a recommendation to grant and the committee decided no. So that puts us down below the five-year plan. The committees, a joint planning committee has been making decisions and those decisions has me, do mean that we are below the five-year. And had they not made those decisions, then we wouldn't be. So we can put forward a lot of sites, but that doesn't mean it will go through. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Leader. Agenda item one hundred and seven, councillor Seeburn.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to ask a question in relation to the establishment of the special interest group to look at the South East ambulance coast, South East Coast ambulance service and the Royal Surrey County Hospital merger. First, let me welcome the creation of a very worthwhile Sig. The provision of general medical and particularly emergency cover is of considerable interest to residents. From the limited data that I've been able to access, the best-served parts of Waverley have mean ambulance response times for emergencies of half the times for the worst-served areas, such as parts of postcodes GU five and GU eight. Similarly, the best-served areas meet or exceed the national target of seventy percent of calls attended within eight minutes of the call, compared with a figure of less than half the target percentage for the least-well-served areas. So the question is, will the Sig be including in its remit a renewal of Waverley's understanding of why these significant differences in performance by area exist within the borough, so that improvement measures can be considered? It would seem to me that such an understanding should be a significant part of the evidence required when testing different development sites in the local plan. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Do you wish to comment?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Well, the short answer is yes, but we've been here before, we had a health Sig before when ambulance response times on the A calls, which is eight minutes, was extremely poor, particularly in the southern part of the borough, Cranly and Hazemere, Cranly, I think, instead of seventy-five percent being answered within that time, it was down in the thirties. So yes, we will be looking at that and indeed reports more recently that you may have seen that if there's a defibrillator in a village, that immediately counts as in attendance. So some of your figures, we will need to look very, very carefully at and also reports that last year, the, the response times were lengthened considerably without anybody knowing. So we will not want to look at those matters for the safety of our residents.
Thank you, Leader. Do you wish to comment further on the report as a whole?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. That completes my report and I commend it to council and wish everybody a happy Christmas. Thank you.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
The next item in the agenda is the minutes of the audit committee held on the seventeenth of November. Councillor Edwards.
I present the minutes to the audit committee of the seventeenth of November two thousand and fifteen. Do I have a second of these minutes, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to second these minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. There were no items in part one, but there, there is a question in part two, I believe, Mr Mayor.
Yes, councillor Ramsdale, you've put your name down to speak on item thirty-four.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I did indeed, but it's been answered for me outside of the meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Edwards.
There have been no other questions. Mr Mayor, I recommend these minutes to the council.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. The next item is the Licensing and Regulatory Committee held on the twenty-sixth of November. Councillor King.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I'm pleased to present the minutes of the meeting of the Licensing and Regulatory Committee held on the twenty-sixth of November. I believe I have a second.
Mr Mayor, it would be my privilege to second them. Thank you.
There are no items in part one and I've received no request to speak on items in part two. So that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that agreed, members?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item eleven, seeing there are no need to go to exempt, there's no need to pursue the exclusion of the present public, therefore that ends the formal part of this evening's meeting. However, we too have two other items of business to deal this evening, namely the council acting as trustee of the Shotter Mill Recreation Ground and of the Euethbequest, but I will hand you over to Mr Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Firstly, in respect of the Shotter Mill Trust, item one minutes, can members as trustees confirm the minutes of the meeting which took place on the fourteenth of October twenty fourteen as a correct record of that meeting? Is that agreed? Thank you. The mayor will sign those minutes later. Apologies for absence are as noted at the beginning of this evening's council meeting. Declarations of interest, in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any interest to declare? Thank you. Annual accounts, can I please invite councillor Ramsdale to introduce the report and to move the recommendation?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Members, we have two reports for us this evening for which we need to consider in our capacity as trustees. For both trusts, the charity commission, charity commission rules require the full council to meet as trustees at least once a year to consider the annual reports and accounts. The council has delegated decisions concerning the day-to-day business of the trusts to the executive acting as trustees. With regard to Shotter Mill Trust, the reports, starting on page three, seeks approval of the annual report and accounts for the Shotter Mill Trust for the year ended thirty-first of March two thousand and fifteen. The accounts show that the trust has unrestricted funds of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand at the end of the year fourteen fifteen. It should be noted that two hundred and five thousand was contributed as a contribution to the three-point-eight million pound refurbishment of the leisure centre that was completed in two thousand and fourteen. This is not, I hasten to add, an annual occurrence. Grant Thornton have audited the accounts and their opinion is in the separate annex. And indeed, the, the reports with the audit opinions are the ones that we received paper copies of. The recommendation to prove the reported accounts is on page four, but I would actually like to make a proposed amendment to the trust account items. And I believe I'll have a second.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to second it.
Mr Chairman, Mr Mayor, Mr Chairman, it is recommended that from two thousand and fifteen sixteen, so next year, the trust's annual accounts be submitted to the council's audit committee for commencement, for comment, sorry, prior to their consideration approval by the full council meeting as trustees. So ahead of the equivalent of this meeting, the audit committee would have had a, a look at some of the detail. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Is that amendment agreed?
Agreed.
In which case, there are now two recommendations. Are they both agreed?
Agreed.
There are no exempt items to consider, thank you for attending, and the meeting is now closed, but please remain in the chamber for the meeting of the Joseph Euethbequest. In respect of the Joseph Euethbequest, item one minutes, can members of the trustees, can members as trustees confirm the minutes of the meeting which took place on the fourteenth of October twenty fourteen as a correct record of that meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. The mayor will sign this later. Apologies are as noted at the beginning of this evening's council meeting. Declarations of interest, in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any interest to declare? Thank you. Annual accounts, can I please invite councillor Ramsdale to introduce the report and to move the recommendation?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As previously so, but specifically towards the Euethbequest, the report, starting on page three, seeks approval of the annual report and accounts for the Euethbequest Trust for the year ended thirty-first of March two thousand and fifteen. The Euethbequest owns nineteen bungalows in Farnham, which must be occupied by older people on low income. These properties are managed by Waverley's housing team. The accounts show that the trust has funds of one-point-one million at the end of the two thousand and fourteen fifteen year. Proposals are anticipated to make good use of these funds in accordance with the bequest. Grant Thornton have audited the accounts and their opinion is in the separate annex. There's the recommendation to approve the reported accounts on page four and there's the same proposed amendment for which I have a second.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'm very pleased to second this proposal.
The proposal being that it is recommended that from two thousand and fifteen sixteen, the trust's annual accounts be submitted to the council's audit committee for comment prior to their consideration and approved, an approval by the full council meeting as trustees. So yet again, the equivalent of this meeting would have had the audit committee look at them prior. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Is that amendment agreed?
Agreed.
So two recommendations, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, that meeting is now closed. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
That brings us to an end of proceedings for this evening and as always, I invite you to join me in the mayor's parlour for refreshments. This time of year, as usual, there are mince pies and mulled wine, but we have an additional special treat this year. Councillor Nazir and his Amadia Muslim community have presented us with a very special seasonal cake, so I do encourage you to come and sample this delicious-looking cake. And I, through councillor Nazir, can we thank your community very much for this, this offering, which I'm sure we will very much enjoy. That only leads me now to say I wish you all a very happy Christmas and an interesting new year. Thank you.